Hear ye, hear ye. It is six thirty according to mine. I think six twenty-nine according to his, but I think he needs a battery. And we'll go ahead at this time and call this July joint meeting together. Welcome the town with us here. And we would like to go ahead and begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. Y'all would please stand and join us if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank thee, Lord, for the gift of life today, Lord, the blessings that's been bestowed upon us. Lord, go with us and be with us as we go through this meeting, Lord, of the joint meeting of the town and county, that we can all work to a positive future. Give us the blessings we need and the knowledge we need to conduct our business. To give thee all the praise and all the glory, Lord, just asking in Jesus' name. Amen.
We'd like at this time to go ahead and call the Board of Commissioners, seated, to transact business of this meeting. And we'll, we do have an agenda before us, but we do need to strike item B. That will be moved to our next meeting. Other than that, would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve the agenda is amended. Got to get a second on that.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four of them. And I would at this time say that Commissioner Prince had a family gathering out of town in Ascot. I would give him permission to go. And I said, well, we've all been elected, duly elected, so I think I wouldn't blame you. Anyway, at this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor to see this board.
At this time, on behalf of the Sparta Town Council, I'll call our meeting to order, absent Millie Richardson tonight.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start into the agenda. We have several presentations tonight. It looks like we have some folks here on the Agriculture Fair, the Pumpkin Festival. I don't know if y'all gonna tag-team this or whatever, but come on up and enlighten us. Welcome, Johnny.
Thank you. I think they all pointed at me when they were trying to figure out who was going to speak. So we get to the end of this, if y'all have questions that I can't answer, I may point back here to Maggie or Aaron Ray. So thank you all for giving us a few minutes to kind of give you an update on what's going on, give you an update on what the Allegheny Ag Committee is doing. And as you all know, we're going to have an Allegheny County Agricultural Fair and Pumpkin Festival. And write this date down, it's going to be September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth at the fairgrounds. We did this in conjunction, partly because of the time of the year, but it's in conjunction with the pumpkin season that will be going on, so it is also a pumpkin festival. We got the support of all the pumpkin producers in Allegheny County. And I don't know whether y'all know it or not, but per North Carolina Department of Agriculture, Allegheny County is the number-one pumpkin-producing county in the state of North Carolina. So it's kind of a little feather in our cap for that. What we're going to accomplish with this, we're going to, number one, we're going to put a spotlight on the number-one industry in Allegheny County, which is agriculture. We're going to have a lot of family fun. We think it's going to be really good for the economy of Allegheny County, and it's going to be a fundraising opportunity for a lot of other entities in this county. For instance, the Wellness Center is going to have bingo out there, so they're going to make some money from that and be able to get their word out. We've got the scouts and several fire departments that are going to be participating, selling concessions and that kind of thing. So we've got broad support from all over the county. Our anchor, I guess so to speak, is going to be a rodeo. Big rodeo coming in here with over a hundred participants, and I might point at Aaron Ray when we get to the end of this, if you've got more questions about the rodeo. But the good news is, this is all informational. It's taken a lot of money to bring this rodeo in, but we are well on our way to having private donations to pay for all of this. So I come to you with information only, not asking for any money. So I know, I see a smile from our chair there, so that's a, that's a good thing. But the rodeo's going to bring in a lot of folks. We've also got the Wild Turkey Federation that is going to have a sanctioned calling contest, so not only will folks from this county, but I think we're going to get some folks coming in to participate in that contest. And since it's sanctioned, if they win or place, they'll be able to go on to other contests, so that's going to be a good thing. It's also going to have everything that you would expect from a good old-fashioned agriculture county fair. We're going to have the garden produce judging, baked goods, canned goods. We're going to have a pumpkin pie contest, and the Yak and Living Magazine is going to publish the recipe for the winning pie. Friday night, we've also got a beef cattle show. Saturday night's the dairy show. We're going to have a tractor driving contest, cornhole tournament. And if you'll recall back, I mentioned this is kind of in conjunction with, with pumpkins. We're going to have a pumpkin chunking contest, we're going to have pumpkin carving contest, and all kinds of stuff like that. So we think it's just going to be good for Allegheny County, it's going to be some good clean family fun. Prices to get in with this are adults ten dollars, four to twelve, five dollars, and if you're under that, you get in for free. We're partnering on our ads and trying to get this word out with the Mountain Heritage Festival, since it's the weekend before, so we're, hopefully, we can get people coming to Sparta and coming to Allegheny County two weekends in a row. Got one other thing I want to throw at you, but I'll stop right there, that's all I've got. I'll ask my two cohorts in the back who are, have I missed anything, or do y'all have questions for us?
Have a rain date, just in case, or is it rain or shine?
It's not going to rain.
It's not going to rain. That's, that's good. I'll take your word for it.
Johnny, on the, the pumpkins, you said were the number-one county, is that growing or selling?
I would say in acreage.
In acreage.
Yeah, the number-one producer. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I would, wouldn't that be correct, Aaron Ray? Yeah. So, yeah.
And Christmas trees, we're about number two.
We're, uh, North Carolina's number-two in the nation. Allegheny County was, would, ash would be first, just because ash is a bigger county. I'm going to guess that Allegheny's probably number-two now, and we're number-one in green reproduction. We make more wreaths and roping and that kind of thing in this county than any county in the United States.
So agriculture still is our number-one income maker for Allegheny County.
By far.
So always like to say Allegheny County's agriculture, and agriculture's Allegheny County.
Agreed, Bob. I agree. Anything else? One other date that I would love for you guys to put on your calendar is February eighteenth. February eighteenth is our annual Allegheny County Agricultural Banquet. I know several of the commissioners, a lot of y'all have been before. If you haven't, you should come. It, like Bob said, shines a spotlight on our number-one industry, agriculture. It also gives some recognition to some folks who, who've really earned it here in this county. And one thing that, that's very noteworthy about February eighteenth, we have a commitment from Agriculture Commissioner Steve Troxler. He will be with us. So we'd really love to see all of y'all here. Steve Troxler's going to be here, and it's going to be a, it's going to be a really good night. So anyway, right down February eighteenth. Questions about that? All right. Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
Before he sits down, I think Johnny needs to be committed on being named the Farmer of the Year. Is that correct?
Correct.
In North Carolina. Is that right? Dennis Jones, committee conference. Yeah, I don't think the, the group could have gotten a better spokesperson up there to be there. So, okay, next on the list is item number two, Sparta Lights update.
Thank you for having us this evening. Of course, everybody knows our mission is to help promote Sparta and its merchants through the addition of Christmas lights and events. We just had our fundraiser last month. We raised fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars to go towards more lighting. We had a bank balance, we try to keep five thousand on the books all the time, so basically we're going to this year with nineteen thousand, three hundred, and some odd change. The way we plan to disperse that money, or use that money, ten thousand dollars to more lights and scenes, there's going to be a Children's Pumpkin Festival October the twelfth, and we're contributing two thousand dollars for food for it, which is free food for kids. Four thousand dollars in maintenance, and then, of course, three thousand dollars for miscellaneous. The bulk of that goes to insurance. An update on our existing lights, we've had some security issues and some maintenance issues that came up here a month or so ago, which I've been talking to some engineers and the manufacturer, a few things, there's some things that we can do, some upgrades that we can do on the lights, which as, these things go bad, and I've got a five-year warranty, but to solve a few issues that have, have come up requires replacing ninety-eight hundred feet of lights that we already have out there. And so instead of doing that, the arrangement that I have right now is if these lights go bad, and every time I fire these lights up, we lose three or four strands, for some reason I don't know, but you've got a light that's out there in the weather, taking water or whatnot, I'm assuming. So as these things go bad, they're going to let me trade them in for a new style that has more features and some other things that we can do. So that's in the process. The farmer's market, lights came in for it today. We'll start on the farmer's market. We got a work detail, and there's three of us, and I was laughing today, pretty pitiful group, we're sixty-one, sixty-eight, and seventy-two. But we'll start on the farmer's market tomorrow afternoon at six o'clock, if anybody wants to come and join us. We got the, the Santa House moved, we're getting ready to finish the inside of the Santa House. Purpose of the Santa House is to be used for more things through the year than just Santa. So a couple things that we're trying to do is tie some things together, and as you'll see that we got up here on the board, this is something really simple, and the idea behind this, and if anybody recognizes where that's at, that's in Elkin downtown, I call them a totem pole, but I can remember as a kid, there was one in Yakerville, Boone, Blowing Rock, and basically, the gist of the thing is mileage. So our idea, if we get approval from Kraus Park in the town, this will go in front of the Santa Hut. Of course, at the top, we'll have so many hundreds of miles, thousands of miles to the north pole, and it'll work its way down, and on the bottom will probably be something in the way of longitude and latitude of Kraus Park, how far the Appalachian Trail to the Parkway, maybe to Boone. But to tie the farmer's market, Christmas lights, the Santa House, all back together, what we're hoping for is to work with Aaron Ray and get our choosing cut on that sign. So it may say five miles to somebody, whoever that might be, ten miles to another one, three miles to another one, whatever. So basically, we tie in Donna Link and her group of girls, which we, a great gratitude too, for all the work that they do for us, but she would do the signs, kids would figure out the mileage and the markers and all that kind of stuff, and we'll put those on the post in front of the Santa House to promote the choosing cut folks, and it's just a novelty item, just something that looks good. One other thing that we're trying to do is tie into some of the other things that we have in authentic Allegheny. Some of these stars that we're looking at are two fifty-three, four, five hundred dollars. If we can tie to some of these folks that do some ironwork here in the county, and Charlie is talking to them now about getting them to do some of this stuff for us, and then we wrap them with lights, so we're making that tie back to some of these creative people to bring as many folks back into the, to Sparta Lights as we can, making it a community event, so to speak. The garage, which worked with Brian on, on upfitting the little garages out there at the farmer's market, the whole purpose of that conversation is right now JB Boyer gives his free rent out at the old store outside of town. At some point in time, he's probably going to lease it or sell it. So I was trying to figure out a place to put, store our Christmas lights, and that's where the town store is theirs. So I agreed with Brian that we'd put a roof on it, paint the building, outfit the building, and we could use it for, and he agreed to let us use it for storage. Bought the paint, that'll probably happen in about two weeks, working with a high school as far as putting a roof on it, trying to get the material donated for it. We were going to do some landscaping, but landscaping creates additional work for somebody on down the road, so then I was going to lean on Donna Link again about painting the flowers on the building. That way we can weed eat right up to it, and we still got the aesthetics of, of having a mural or something on it. Donna and her group, I don't know if you've seen the mural uptown, hopefully you have, did a fantastic job on that one. They've got another one coming for this fall. I don't tell her what to do, so I don't know what it's going to be, but something about agriculture and growing and fall harvest and that kind of thing. We'll probably change it out mid-August, late August, whenever she gives me a phone call and, and has got it ready, we'll go up with it. We get back to, and I mentioned the Kids Pumpkin Festival. October the twelfth, if you look on social media, for whatever it's worth, everybody's always talking about, there's nothing for the kids to do. And so Annette Wagner, we talked to her, and she was wanting to do something and put a group together. Heather Klein had mentioned something with the Rotary and a few other people, the Shriners, about giving something back to the community as far as the kids are involved. So on October the twelfth in Kraus Park, and I just gave Brian the paperwork for that, we're going to do a Kids Pumpkin Festival, twelve and under, free food. I had my first walking taco, if you hadn't had one, Saturday, so I could figure out what a walking taco was. a walking taco was, I didn't have a clue, but it's a Dorito, they cut sideways and put all this stuff, and that's the kids' crave right now, everybody wants a walking taco. So between free walking tacos and free little high C punch deals, we don't know how big it'd be, but I guarantee you, if it's free food and free games for twelve and under, there'll be a bunch of young'uns there. Anticipating two, three, maybe four hundred, I don't know. I do know trunk or treat. Brian, what did they do last year? It was big.
Six, probably six hundred.
Six hundred kids. So, like I say, that close to Halloween, and the word gets out, free food, free games, if it rains, we're gonna migrate onto the farmer's market and feed the kids, sheriff will be there, anybody and everybody's welcome, but it's all, all the games, everything will be geared toward the children. And it'll be from ten to five, October the 12th. And hopefully, we'll have some more come onboard, spread the workload out a little bit. Kraus Park, we're still gonna try to light up some stuff, we backed off putting figurines in it because there's a little bit of a vandalism problem, however, the elementary school has stepped up and agreed to give us the front yard on the elementary school downtown, and so we're gonna carry the lights this year that direction. So we'll go from Doughton Street on down to the elementary school. Logistically, we don't know what's gonna happen with streetscape as far as how big of a disruption that'll be. We may, when we get closer and working with Brian, have to move some of the scenes that we had in the two-block area, may move them further, shift them down that way too, or maybe out eighteen, I don't know, but I got a feeling that we may not have power in some locations, and we may just have obstacles in others that we can't overcome during that time span, depending on the progress and how that thing moves. But, pretty much, that's in a nutshell. October 12th, the lights will be on, November 16th is the Christmas lighting, same thing we did last year, hopefully a little bit bigger, but we'll light the tree on Main Street, hopefully close twenty-one, we had three or four hundred people last year, so it was a big thing. We got homecoming coming up, which is like to do the green lights again, just like we've done. So a lot of things happening, but if you're not doing anything tomorrow, you're more than welcome, come out to farmer's market and put up lights. Anytime you feel lonely and nobody will take you, just call, and I'll give you a work date, and we'll go from there.
Pretty covered right now.
You're not looking for a second or third job.
I think I'm gonna go and fishing tomorrow, though.
Any questions?
Thank you for what you do.
Well, thank.
Last year, when they had the Christmas lighting, and they had the streets closed and everything, that was really...
I do know that night, and we tried to go out to eat, and I was surprised, but the night that we lit the tree, we went to three different restaurants, and the wait time was an hour to hour and a half, and I thought that was a pretty good statement, we had got three times the turnout, I'd never dreamed, we got three times the turnout than I thought we would ever have, as something as lighting up a tree in the front of the courthouse. But it went really good, hope we can add to it, make it a little bit bigger this year, maybe get a couple of more groups involved to where we can do some more refreshments or something, and, you know, as we found out with some other things, trick or trunk or lighting a tree, free food brings them out, so maybe we can guarantee our numbers that way. Thank you, sir, thank you.
Jeff, I think everybody up here, though, would like to say thank you for the hard work that you've put in, and I know that you've been a worker bee from the get-go, so, and you and your staff and your crew do an excellent job.
We appreciate, and like I say, if you're not doing anything, you're not...
Well, I'm booked too, I'm, hey, I'm coaching football too, but appreciate you guys.
All right, next on the list, we have Heritage Festival Update, Katie Headman, welcome.
Mayor, Mr. Chairman, thanks for having us tonight. Super excited to announce that it is our 25th Annual Heritage Festival, it's coming soon, it's always the third Saturday of September, it's September 21st. Currently, we have fifty-four craft vendors, thirteen nonprofits, so if you haven't filled out your nonprofit application, come and visit Karen O'Leary. Typically, we have about forty nonprofits that participate, six food vendors. I had a great conversation, Brian and I, with Agnes Joins this morning, just talking about the history of how it got started, and in fact, I think she said the President of the United States sent a letter for the, after the first one, recognizing it. So we were excited about partnering with Aaron Ray and his group and co-marketing, working with our TDA money to make sure we can market both events, so it kind of spreads it out. We have our entertainment this year, we're focusing on local, local folks that are from the area, whether they lived here before, or they currently live here. We have the Rise and Shine Band, we have a forty-year reunion of the Back Sticks Group, I don't know if you are familiar with them, but Grayson and...
Reach and Back.
Reach and Way Back, and we're super excited, they've been practicing, and they're really excited about coming. Toontown, Crossfire, Gap Civil, of course, Sonia and Charis will be our emcee, our mayor as well, we appreciate that, helping us with it, the Possum Queen Contest, lots of kids' activities, we want this to be a family-friendly event, it is free, so we're gonna try to really do a lot for the kids and support, support our community focusing on our heritage. Again, we're gonna partner with the extension to create some kids' activities that we can move over to the fairgrounds after we're done with Heritage Festival, like a corn pit and some different things that we're gonna help build together, so we can use it year after year. And, you know, it's, it's, this is our big event, so we encourage everyone to come out, support it, volunteer, we've got a great committee, we've reached out to some of the best folks in the community to help us pull this together, and I'm super excited. And we are accepting sponsorship, so if anyone wants to sponsor the event, but it's one of our, our big things to celebrate, and I'm hopeful we're gonna, well, we're not sure exactly, we haven't announced where it's gonna be, we're thinking that we possibly could be early in the streetcape project, so we can still be on Main Street, and we'll see as we get an update and as things move along, but we're hopeful. But in addition to our Mountain Heritage Festival, Sarah Dalton with the Authentically Allegheny is gonna share with you additional entertainment in the evening that the Business Development Center is sponsoring, and I'm gonna invite her up to tell you a little bit about it. So it's not just a day event, and it's also an evening event that we're hopeful will bring a lot of folks off the mountain, up the mountain, to come and be entertained. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you guys for having us. So as Katie said, the evening of the Mountain Heritage Festival, we're gonna be having a concert, and we have been working with Chad Beasley to try to come up with some kind of a project or something that could help shed light on what an asset the auditorium is for the community. So Saturday, September 21st, we're gonna be having a concert at the auditorium, as Katie said, it is sponsored by the Blue Ridge Business Development Center. It's gonna start at 6:00 PM, and Gap Civil is gonna be opening for us, and then, following up after them, will be Summerbrook and the Mountain Faith Band. The concert's gonna end around 8:00 PM, so that allows for anybody who's coming in, they can go get supper afterwards, or they can catch live music at Muddy Creek, Main Street Pizzeria, or they can go to the Jubilee and still have time to catch music there. Our tickets will go on sale August the 1st, and they can be purchased online through our Authentically Allegheny website, or you can pick them up at The Chamber, or you can come up to the BDC and get them there as well. So we're really excited about it, we're hoping to, you know, sell a lot of tickets, all of the proceeds from the tickets will go back into the auditorium to help with any kind of updates. So, yeah, if anybody has any questions, we'll take those. Thank you, guys.
A big day.
Thank you guys for doing that, too, appreciate that.
Okay, next on the list is the Sheriff's Run for Claus.
I'm hitting all the holidays, pumpkin?
Yeah.
No, we all love Christmas, right Wes?
Christmas, that's right.
First, I wanna say thanks for having me, I'm here talking for Sheriff Brian Maines, and Nick, and myself, about this 5K that we are teaming up together to sponsor on September 14th. I'm actually representing the Allegheny County Employee Wellness Committee, we're a committee that has monthly wellness events to try to get our employees' health to get better, which in turn affects our healthcare cost, and tries to save the county money in the big picture. Brian and Nick are both in a conference, so it rolled downhill to me to come and tell y'all about the 5K run. Like I said, it will be on September 14th. He is having a kids' fun run, which will start at 9:00 AM, for all the little folks who we don't feel real comfortable having out on the main roads running, they're gonna be able to run...
Is there an age requirement on that?
Not on the fun run, it's just kids of any ages, when you get to the...
Fifty and above and below and all that stuff?
I'm sure you will fit right in, if you want to, if you wanna jump right in there, you know? It's gonna actually be inside the park, and as long as they complete one full lap, they don't have to do a mile. I know my little Sadie, sometimes she would go walk with me, and I mean, it's a lot of steps for her little b legs around that park just to make it one time, so anything between one and three laps is gonna be good for the kids' fun run. They will all get a free Santa hat, and we're gonna try to do some type of little draw-in for a couple of prizes. The 5K itself will start at 9:30, I've handed out a map, we're going to start at the gate that's on Veterans Park, on the Sparta Parkway side, we'll go out and turn right, go up the Parkway to Blevins, and back through, back to the end of the Parkway, and come back to Veterans Park. Brian will have several of his staff on duty, you know, like at the main intersection, when we come out onto twenty-one for safety reasons, we'll have signage everywhere, he's gonna have at least one or two actually riding the route to make sure nobody has any issues, has any problems, they need, if they can't make it, they need a ride, something, we're sure to take care of them. Brian and Nick are both planning on participating, and I think Brian told me that he had decided to get himself off the hook of trying to beat Nick by pushing his grandbaby in the stroller, so that's gonna be his scapegoat, but they're both gonna be competing. All the money raised, his main goal for this to be a fundraiser is to be able to buy every child from pre-K through third grade a Christmas gift this year. You know, we, I know that my child surely forgets that, you know, there are several children who don't get hardly anything for Christmas, so that's his main goal, and it's gonna be a team effort between the Sheriff's Office and the Allegheny County Wellness Committee. We are looking for sponsors, I already have four or five lined up, we're gonna do like a fifty-dollar sponsorship, that will get their names on the back of the t-shirts, everyone who participates and registers, pre-registers, will get a t-shirt for participating. I brought up to Brian that maybe our county employees and the Sheriff's Department guys and girls can wear maybe a different color, I think our t-shirts are gonna be red, we get the employees to be green, and that way, if anybody does have a problem, something comes up, they have a question, they'll know to look, hey, I can look for a green shirt, and they can get me to somebody that needs, you know, that has the information I need. We do have some volunteers that are going to, that were wanted to participate, but they're actually on duty on EMS that day, well, they're going to be set up down there, and if they get a call, they can go, but otherwise, they'll kind of be on standby force in case anybody does have any kind of issues. Like I said, Brian really wanted to get the point across that it's such a good cause, that it's really dear to him, and he has come up with, from the name and the flyer, was all Brian, he designed all that himself. I think that that's just about it on what he wanted me to be sure and let you guys know. Do you have any questions?
He even put his picture on the front of it, didn't he?
Well, I told him that, you know, he slimmed down quite a bit now, that might've been him a little while ago, but it is a great cause, and we're gonna have, you know, I've already got a list of volunteers and participants just from a few offices here, they've got a big list over at the Sheriff's Department already, so we're gonna have tables set up, you know, every so often, to people giving out water. I did talk to Maggie and Nina, and told them that if they would set a table up and hand out water, they could put a banner on the front of the table advertising their fair that's coming up, 'cause it'll be two weekends later. So I know they are at least one set of employees that will be setting up a table and handing out water to everybody.
Do you have to be a resident of Allegheny County to run?
No, I do not think so, and I told, actually, Brian is in a conference, and he has been, I wanted to talk to him and make sure I got everything across that he wanted y'all to know. I did ask him, I have a friend that I know that is a Galax city policeman and a fireman over there, and I checked with Brian, and he's not answering me back yet, if I can, you know, share it with them, hopefully they would have several participants, but I'm sure that anybody that's, that wants to be involved will be more than welcome. It's gonna be twenty dollars for adults to participate, and like I said, you'll get a t-shirt, anybody who sponsors, their names will be on the back of the t-shirts, the little guys at the park will get a Santa hat. We do think that's probably gonna be best, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to Steve Mason about some age, he's a guru on 5Ks, but we don't want anybody maybe under the age of ten or twelve to be running without a participating adult for safety purposes, so, but if, you know, you have a twelve-year-old child that wants to run with you, their entry fee's still gonna be ten bucks, so, so they can afford to let the kids run too, but we definitely want the smaller ones at that age group to be supervised, so... Does anybody have any questions?
I think I read in Proverbs somewhere one time that's something to the effect of the foolish run when no one chases them, so there's that, so I probably can't enter them.
I'll be sure to pass that along to the sheriff.
That's probably not verbatim, you may wanna check my theology there, but...
Yes, and we'll have a little, you know, as it gets closer, we'll get a little bit more information, but I think I already have, I mean, I think I've got about seventeen participants and about fourteen volunteers, and that's just out of two or three departments. Social services has really come through on that level there as far as helping volunteer and stuff.
Any other questions? Drew has handed me a, an ordinance declaring a road closure for this, have you seen a copy of this?
Yes, I have.
Okay, I hadn't seen this yet, but we do need to, it looks like we are asked to take action on this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, the elected folks, if this is a government-sponsored event, then the elected boards have the authority to do the road closure, so we would not have to go through the formalized DOT process, so I think it's beneficial for the two boards here to enact this ordinance, and then we can handle all the other details necessary.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
My board made the motion, and your board...
My board seconded, so...
It might be better for each board to do their own action.
Terry's anxious to run, so...
You ready to run, are you? John, was it your motion?
That was my motion, yes.
I'll second.
All right, we got a second, all in favor, make it, say an aye.
Aye.
You oppose no, four oh.
From Town Council, I'll entertain that motion, ma'am. I have a motion, do I get a second?
I'll second.
And I got a second, all in favor, show a hand, show a hand, four oh, town approved.
Thank you very much, and we do, of course, invite anybody who wants to run or walk, he wanted to be sure that everybody knows that you don't have to be out there and be a super athlete and run the 5K, you can walk, and we do always need volunteers.
I would run it, but you need to close the road for another day.
You can come and volunteer with me, it'll be fine.
We're limited on the ambulances that day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Pack of lunch in the summer. Okay, moving along to Mr. Brian Edwards, I think we've got actually a couple of subjects, I've found out one since I've gotten into my new role, and ask if he would share on that as well, so you can do it whatever order you want to.
Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do first is talk about the bridge replacement on Highway 21 here, the Little River Bridge, and then I'll go into the streetscape. On Thursday, July the 11th, there was a meeting held at the conference room, Sparta Town Office, and that invitation was to Allegheny County Manager, Town Manager, and we had Skyline Telephone, Blue Ridge Electric Utilities invited, and a number of DOT representatives there.
For clarification, who called it?
The meeting was called by ICE of Carolinas, they are under contract with the Department of Transportation to coordinate this project, ICE, ICE of Carolinas, and Ms. Teresa McClung conducted the meeting, there was another representative there from the company, and they presented to us, basically, it was their question to inquire about... it was their question to inquire about utilities, but in the course of the meeting, the information came out for the first time to us about what exactly was being proposed.
To the prize.
Scope of this project, which I'll share with you now. Project overview, project is to replace the bridge over US 21 over Little River, south of Sparta and Allegheny County. Replacement bridge will be staged construction to maintain two-way, one-lane each direction management of traffic. Stage one will construct a parcel, partial proposed bridge on the downstream east side of existing bridge and switch traffic to completed partial proposed bridge. Stage two will demo existing bridge and construct remaining proposed bridge and open to traffic when completed. So that's, they're, they're gonna build two lanes downstream from the existing bridge. They'll be using the existing bridge for traffic while that's being done. Then they'll demo the old bridge and add another section to that. So the new bridge will be 50 feet wide. It'll have two 12-foot travel lanes, north and south, and there'll be a 12-foot medium in the middle. It will not be a traffic lane, but there'll be a 12-foot section in, included in the new bridge, along with five-foot shoulder on each side. So the new bridge, total bridge will be 50 feet wide. It is going to require a DOT to require significant property for construction of this bridge and right-of-way, but that's all the information that we have at this point.
Do they have a projected start date?
They do, they do, and let me share with you what I have here in that regard. They say right now that 25% of the plans are completed, and that included the utility The DOT easement acquisition documents are scheduled to be complete by August the 16th, which is coming up shortly. Hydro plans to be complete by September 27th of this year. DOT preliminary plans by December the 20th. Combined field inspection by February the 21st of 2020. Right-of-way plans and acquisition, April of 2020. Easement and acquisition permit drawings completed by July of 2020, so this time next year. And then final plans to contracts, December of 2020, and they plan to let the project for bid in April of 2021. So that's the information that we have to, to this point. I would expect that if they let the contracts in April, or they let the bids in April, we could expect construction to start probably sometime before the end of 2021, late summer, early fall of 2021.
Thank you for that. I did, I've had a couple of conversations, and one of the affected property managers, if it goes as presented now, who needless to say wasn't very happy, and that just happened not long before this meeting, and I assured him that we didn't design it, didn't develop it, didn't draw the plans. It is a state highway, and they are the ones that are involved, and so it'll be interesting to, to see how it progresses, but at this point, I mean, it's still in the stages of, the drawings aren't complete yet.
That's right. It is in some page, it says here, 25% of the plans have been developed at this point.
Personally, I like the, the plan of being able, 'cause I was wondering how, they're gonna tear that bridge out and build another one, what are we gonna do with traffic? But it's really going to take a lot more land, and, you know, if I...
They got more room there.
Yeah, I don't really know, John. They didn't, the, the plans were developed and designed with DOT and their contractors. The town was not, we, we've, no input.
First, we knew of it or seen anything of any degree was on July the 11th.
That's correct.
When they came and presented here.
That's correct.
Anyway, I do have two sets of plans in the manager's office, if anyone would like to, to see those, but as I say, they're, what did, 25% on the...
Yes.
But it, but it does actually show you the path.
Yes.
That it's currently laid out.
That's correct.
So would invite anybody who would like to see that, it's, we do have, and you probably have a set.
We have a set also at the town office.
Thank you.
Next item would be an update on the streetscape project. I will offer, the project received formal approval from the local government commission and the interim financing approval through BB and T. All financing with USDA is confirmed. Vinoy and Sons Construction is the general contractor, is approved by the town council for the project. Final contract insurance bonds is in process, and to that, I've received this on Friday of last week. This is the contract documents for the downtown streetscape and waterline project. Our attorney reviewed and signed off on this document today. This document is digitally being transmitted to the USDA office in Raleigh, and we believe that the review down there would be fairly minimal because all the construction documents have been previously reviewed and approved. This is just a final review of the contract with the contractor and bond and payment bond provision, so I believe we are moving forward at a good rate. The USDA representative in Wes Jefferson, our office that we're working with, she is on vacation this week, so there will be no further movement there, but we are hoping to schedule a pre-construction conference next week and to receive the notice to proceed from the USDA office next week. And as soon as we have that notice and that conference, we will be meeting with the contractor to develop a construction schedule. So we do not have any dates at this point, but it is my anticipation that we can hopefully begin construction before the end of August, but I do not have any dates. As soon as we have more information available, we will be sharing that with you, and want to express my appreciation to the county commissioners for their support for this project, not only in support of the, the resolution of support, but also the monetary contribution. Be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Questions? Thank you, Brian. All right, we will move along, see, we omitted item B, and moving along to public comments. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to address this joint board, feel free to come and do so at this time.
Just would like to recognize the activities that went on this past week and weekend in Sparta. I think the road market, every comment that I've heard has been very positive. Sales apparently were good, and the vendors that I have spoken with said that it was very successful, so appreciate what Mr. Miles has done to promote this idea of take a break from the interstate and incorporate into that the road market activities, and, and I think he gets a lot of credit for seeing this project to this point.
I concur with that. Success, a lot of, be careful out there this weekend. Test your patience and your driving skills. And I think with that, I'm gonna kind of turn it over to Mayor.
At this time, we'll entertain any town council members that would like to have some comments, and I'll start at the end of the table with the Councilman Brady. Do you have anything to throw anything out there? You have anything you want to throw out there? You're ready to run, though, right?
Which way?
You're running, you just run. That's a Councilman's blair.
It looks like we're having a lot of activity going on in September with the agricultural fire and the heritage festival, and so everybody needs to rest up, 'cause it's gonna be busy, it's like from here on out.
So Jones, do you have anything you'd like to...
It's just always a pleasure to get to meet with the commissioners, and I'm like Brian said, we just much appreciate their support and always of our water, water, waterline project, the streetscape, and it's, it's just wonderful to see that the county, county can work together on a lot of things, and along with the Sparta lights and the agriculture community with Johnny Wishon and SRC and the Chamber and, and Jennifer with the county and the sheriff, but just, it's just great to see people pull together and work together and get a lot accomplished.
So Brady?
I just wanted to say we've been able to meet together, but I want to say that it amazes me how much goes on in this town, in county. I mean, there is not a weekend that something isn't planned. There's not a, almost a day when, you know, you got people here from out of town, you got people here locally, but it just constantly amazes me at how much is going on. I mean, this is a little county, but it's, it sure don't act like it, but I'm, I'm just amazed at what all happens.
As we close out our part of the town, our town meeting here, the joint meeting, I'd like to concur with what John said there. Every weekend, there's something that goes on in our town and our community, and, and August is no slouch either. We've got the demolition derby coming up this coming weekend, and a car show from the VFW. The next weekend, I think there's a mudsling that goes on, and the next weekend, the school starts, and we've got Friday night football coming, and I'm excited about the youth football programs again this year. So we, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in our community, and as we all come together, let's enjoy it and have some fun together. September's gonna be here, and then October, and my favorite time of the year, Christmas time, when that snow starts falling, I can't wait. So there we go. I'm very, very thankful. Thank you for the commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, for having us down here in your arena right here. We appreciate that, holding our joint meeting here, and just like to thank everybody for their support of not only the town, but the county. It takes each and every one of us to make this thing happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time we'll go to county commissioner comments, I'll start from the far left down here, Commissioner John Irvin.
It was a busy weekend, and it looked like a success, but I couldn't enjoy it because I was dodging the drivers that were pulling out in front of me. But I am going to start a new festival. It's gonna be a weed, a weed-pulling festival. It will be in my flower garden, and you are more than welcome to come and participate at any time. There will not be a set date. That's it.
Thank you. Love you.
Yeah, the Highway 21 was a great success. My back can attest to that, carrying tubs in, carrying tubs out. I told Suzanne, I hope we don't do it again next year, but the traffic was unbelievable. The people in town, the people at the Ag Center, that's as far as I got was the Ag Center, and I had to go back, but it was great. I want to thank the Chamber. In the last year, year and a half or two years, I think the Chamber's gone from here to here, and I applaud you for all the hard work, and it helps the town and it helps the county, and that's one thing that I think all of us try to do. This town works with the county, and the county works with the town. We don't work against each other, and that's for the betterment of the whole county. Everybody benefits from it. And one last thing, this past, a couple of weeks ago, with the State Board for Community Colleges, Dr. Cox from Wilkes Community, Susan Murphy and Karen Lees presented a program to the committee, to all the board members in 58 community colleges, on what Allegheny County does for education and the amount of scholarships that, that are given out every year and has been for the past 25 years. I'd say that all of them were very impressed with Allegheny County being as small of a county as we are, to be able to support as many young people that want to get a better education. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Osborn.
I'd just like to say I'm thankful to be a part of Allegheny County and, and everything's going on, it's, everybody's echoed the same thing, but it's, it's amazing, I'm like Johnny, it amazes me that stuff is happening and going on in this county, and all these groups and committees and, and all of us has one thing in common, that's to better the, the county, and that's what it's all about. It's all about the people, you know, and, and I certainly appreciate that and all the work that's at SRC and Authentically Allegheny and, and the festival, the Pumpkin Festival crowd has really worked, a lot of folks involved in that, tried to pull that off, and I think that'll be a big, big event, and that just sort of comes down to right town the year when the harvest is done, and, and everybody can have a good fair and enjoy and have a lot of fun. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, in closing, I do thank the town for being here with us tonight and sharing in this meeting and the good information we've heard. I think we may be even gonna be starting off this weekend with some music, maybe, all this talking about the future, you got something to do this weekend. I do want to end with a kind of a message or a plea to everyone, is if you have had their ongoing conversations with the county manager's office on any business, I want to encourage you, if it's not consummated or completed, I want to encourage you to, to be sure and, and reach out just to make sure we don't drop the ball on anything. We're working diligently, you have some great staff here that has answered the call and is, are helping, stepping up to the plate and helping us, great board of, of support here, so we don't expect any interruptions in services or in projects that are going on, and with the support of the board, we might, can even speed a few of them up just a little bit, but we want to get it right, and we will be rolling out the timeline of the new manager hiring process at Monday night's meeting, so stay tuned. And that's all I have. Ryan, any other...
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the town council board. I have a motion, and do I get a second? Have a second. All in favor, show of hands to adjourn from the town council, 4-0.
All right, boards. Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Move, second, and the third. All in favor, make it known, but say an aye.
Aye.
Get up and leave.